Community College District will come to order. We have three closed-session items. Conference. Oh. Roll call. Mary, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Waugh, Dr. Selvage.
Here.
Dr. Fellow.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Hilsman.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Osterling.
Here.
Ms. Baughn.
Thank you. No. We have three items on the closed-session agenda. Conference with labor negotiators, agency-designated representatives, Lynda Waugh, Board President, Ross Selvage, Board Vice President, unrepresented employee superintendent, president. Collective bargaining, PCCFA designated negotiator, Dr. Rajean Verdiyan, Superintendent, President. Public employee appointments. And read each one of them. Public employee appointments, Assistant Superintendent, President Instruction, Vice President Instruction, Assistant Superintendent, Vice President, Business and Administrative Services, Vice President, Human Resources, Dean, Business, Dean, Kinesiology, Health and Athletics, Dean, Languages and English as a second language, Dean, Mathematics and Computer Science, Director, Outreach and Transfer. Instructors, Sociology, Mathematics IV, Registered Nursing II, English II, Chemistry II, Theater Arts, Accounting II, Computer Science, Administration of Justice, Anthropology, Business, Life-Drawing, Geology, Adult Basic Education/GED, Product Industrial Design, Counselor, Financial Aid, Librarian. Do we have any speaker cards? Or, excuse me, is there anybody who would like to make public comment on items that are on the closed-session agenda? Okay, hearing none, we will adjourn to closed session. The Wednesday, June 1st, 2016 meeting of the Board of Trustees of Pasadena Area Community College District will resume in open session. There are no reportable actions from our closed session. First item on the agenda, open session, is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Fellow, will you be so kind as to lead us?
Please stand and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
We now have a recognition. Kelly Bond, will you please join me and President Verdiyan at the lectern?
Ms. Baughn, you have completed one year as student trustee at the Pasadena Area Community College District. The Board of Trustees would like to recognize you for your service to the district and to the college and the leadership that you have displayed. And Board President, Dr. Ross Selvage, will give you this.
Thank you so much.
Now, for those of you who have been attending our Board meetings, Kelly's contributions here have gone far beyond just what you see here at the Board meetings. She's extremely active in various organizations that promote the interests of students, not just here at PCC, but throughout the community college system, and we thank you for that.
Thank you.
Do you have people with cameras?
Let's take any pictures.
Yeah. This is the one that'll be in the newspaper.
That's right, exactly. Perfect. That's great.
I'd like to say a few things.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank Pasadena City College for this award, I guess. Yes. I especially want to thank trustee Waugh, who is not here today unfortunately, but she has been a great mentor, and I've grown so much this year. I want to thank President Verdiyan for being such a great superintendent, president. You inspire me, Dr. Verdiyan, you truly do. And Dr. Selvage, I have gotten to know you, but I want to get to know you more, as well as the other members of the Board. I want to continue working with you guys as Vice President of Academic Affairs. Dr. Foster will be working together. I'm excited for that. So I will still be involved here at Pasadena City College, not as a trustee, but as part of the Associated Students. Thank you again very much for everything that this college has provided and all the support that this college has given me this year. Thank you.
Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mr. President. First, Martin Enriquez will speak on 3C. Would you like to speak now or when it comes up? Okay.
Good evening, honorable trustees and assembled persons. I am Martin Enriquez. As I said previously, I will read into the record the letter of Reverend Monsignor Tobias English of February 3rd, 1992 into the record. This letter was addressed to Walter T. Shatford II and a care of copy to Dr. Jack Scott. I emailed this letter of 1992 to a member of the Board. So what I read is not a surprise, and hand-delivered a copy. Monsignor English's letter reads as follows. As the pastor of St. Andrews Church, I am concerned about the well-being of the Chicano and Hispanic community, both in the spiritual and worldly realms. St. Andrews is the largest church in western Pasadena, serving the spiritual needs of its adherents. The bulk of the congregation is Latino of Mexican heritage. As such, the interests of the Chicano and Hispanic Catholic community are the interests of St. Andrews Catholic Church. He goes on to write, "I found his presentation forceful and convincing. I concur with his findings." And then he urges, "I," meaning Tobias English, "urge the Board of Trustees to give serious thought to the plan proposed by yours truly. Thank you very much."
Thank you. We have two requests to speak about the Armenian genocide resolution. Would you like to speak now or when the item comes up?
Let me have a second.
Okay, both of you? Good. Okay.
Thank you.
We have no others. Thank you.
Thank you. The next order of business is approval of minutes. We have approval of minutes for meeting number 10, regular business meeting, May 4, 2016. Meeting number 11, May 10, 2016. Meeting number 12, study session meeting, May 18, 2016.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion to approve and a second. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection?
All in favor?
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously?
I had a question. Christmas. No, I'm okay.
Okay. Item E, approval of consent items. Are there any consent items that any trustee would like brought out separately?
Motion to approve consent items.
Actually, one item has been pulled from the consent agenda. This is Consent Item 234-B. So for all the items on the consent agenda, other than Item 234-B, do I have a motion to approve?
Do you have one?
Second.
I know. Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Action items recommended for approval. Item F, oath of office, student trustee. Would Nuneir Garipian please join me and, oh, you don't want to go? Me and President Verdiyan at the lectern. This is the official oath of office for student trustee. I might add that Nuneir is a political science major. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, here for two years, and this is probably your first elected office. Is that correct? That's appropriate for a political science major. Would you like to make any remarks, President Verdiyan?
Nuneir Garipian has been a model student at the college. I had a nice conversation with her and the dean of Student Services, Dean Rebecca Cobb, and I was very impressed by how much Nuneir understands how politics works at the college level. As mentioned by trustee Dr. Ross Selvage, Nuneir is going to go to law school after completing her degree in political science. She's going to be transferring for the fall of 2017. And during the two years that she's been at the college, she has made a very constructive participation, if you want, in the, not only the government of the Associated Student Affairs, but also the college at large. And we congratulate you on your election to trustee, student trustee.
Thank you so much.
Now, you need to stand here, and you need to raise your right hand. You can face me. And I will read the oath, and you will repeat after me. Okay. I, Nuneir Garipian, do solemnly swear.
I, Nuneir Garipian, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you. Would you like to say anything?
Because you can see it over there.
Okay.
You need to sign right here. The next order of business is Item G. Adopt Resolution Number 553, Reserves for Contingencies 2015-2016. Dr. Verdiyan?
Yes, we are asking that the Board approve this Resolution Number 553, and that's a routine to adopt the reserves for contingencies for 2015 and 16 in the amount of $50,000.
Is there any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
The item has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? The item passes unanimously.
Is this a blanket vote?
Yeah, I just, I'm for it all.
Item H, approval of equal employment opportunity fund, multiple method allocation model certification form, fiscal year 2015-2016. President Verdiyan?
It is recommended that the Board of Trustees approve this multiple method allocation model certification form. What this does, it informs the chancellor's office that the college has followed everything that the chancellor's office wants us to do and that we have complied about the multiple method allocation model when it comes to the EEO at Pasadena Area Community College District.
Is there any presentation?
No.
And it looks like we've complied, so I move this motion?
Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Approval, Item I, approval of additions and deletions to the current, excuse me, the credit curriculum. President Verdiyan?
We are recommending the addition of one credit course and the deletion of three other courses. And as you will notice, that the deletions are due to the fact that those courses are no longer current, and the addition is required as one of the new courses for the transfer degrees and also for transfers to the UCs.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Board? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
I'm voting no.
Thank you. Do we need a roll call on this?
That's what the lights are for.
Yeah.
I'm serious, you don't need a roll call. That's what the lights are for.
Yeah. Mary, did you record that we had who voted yes and no?
Dr. Selvage?
Aye.
Dr. Fellow?
I'm aye.
Ms. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Hilsman?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Osterling?
Aye.
And the student trustee?
Aye.
She votes aye. Thank you. Item J, Appointment to Measure P, Citizens Oversight Committee. Dr. Verdiyan?
We currently have four vacancies. Three of the vacancies are to be appointed by trustees to represent their respective trustee areas, and the fourth one to represent the Senior Citizens Organization. The Board members have nominated trustee, excuse me, have nominated Mr. Rick Albaraz to represent trustee area three, Dr. Bill Opel to represent trustee area two, and Mr. Joseph Pizeronian to represent the Senior Citizens Organization. We still have one vacancy that will be filled in the coming month for trustee area number one.
Would the trustees who have nominated these individuals like to make a brief comment about the individuals they've nominated? Mr. Osterling?
I nominated Bill Opel to serve as the person on the committee to represent trustee area number two. Bill is very financially sophisticated, but also Bill has been very actively involved in the PCC Foundation for many years, so I think he brings a great balance of looking out for the taxpayers' interests, but also has a passionate dedication to the college.
I would like to add that a long, long time ago, Bill Opel and I both belonged to the Highlanders Club, the mountaineering club here at Pasadena City College when we were students. Trustee Brown?
Yeah, I have persuaded Mr. Rick Olivares to serve on this measure P. He was very excited because he loves PCC. As a matter of fact, he was graciously opened his home to welcome our president when he first came here. But the bottom line is that he, Mr. Olivares, is a city attorney, and he really wants to be involved in the affairs of PCC. And of course, he would be a wonderful person to work on measure P. So I'm very proud to have him join us.
Thank you. With respect to Mr. Zeronian, who is going to represent Senior Citizens Organization, I've known him for quite a long time in various civic activities here in the city of Pasadena, and I'm also delighted that he is both a graduate of the University of Southern California and a former naval officer, as am I. So I'm very pleased with that. I have asked an individual to formally accept my nomination of him, and I expect to present his name at the next Board meeting for representation of area A, area one. So do I have a motion for the three individuals named to be appointed to the Measure P Oversight Committee?
I move approval for those three to be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The motion passes unanimously.
I think it's green.
Item K, Board Policy Revisions. The Board Policy Review Committee has gone over these. Is a member of the committee going to speak on these?
Well, I'm a member of the committee. This was to put us in conformity, and there's nothing out of the ordinary here. It's just policy statements dealing with the student trustee, and everything's up to date.
Okay, so I would like to speak.
Yes, Trustee Brown?
When it, okay, so we had two policies that we reviewed, right? I think. One is the student, the student trustee, which is pretty clear-cut. But the one that was very impressive to me was the one on articulation. We had two sets. One, the articulation for high schools and the college, where students can take AP classes. And what was, to me, what was very, that came out very clearly was the importance that the articulation classes, the students, and the faculty of the high school and the faculty of the college has to agree that this is something that is going to be credited. You know, a lot of folks, you know, in the past there were confusion. So if there's a school, a high school, let's say for instance Muir, we don't want to miss Muir. So if students at Muir want to take college credit classes, there's got to be a written agreement between the faculty from PCC and the faculty from the high school, so these classes will be honored. I thought this was very good, so I like this articulation.
Yes, thank you very much, Trustee Brown. Are there any other trustees like to comment on this item? Do I hear a motion?
Move approval.
To approve the three policy revisions. So moved?
Aye.
Second? We have a motion and a, excuse me, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, unanimously. Item L, Adopt Resolution Number 555 in support of AB 222-2, student transit passes. Dr. Verdiyan?
We are recommending that the Board adopt this resolution that will help the students of not only our district, but all the community college students to have cheaper ITAP cards and to make a program that will help them get bus passes and transit passes more easily and at a more affordable rate.
Now, this came through the Legislative Committee. Trustee White, do you have a comment?
Yeah. The, we felt on the committee that this was a very important bill because we know that our students have transportation costs, and not everybody has a car, you have to use the public transportation, and the costs have gone up for our students. So this is a bill that would correct that by offering low or no-cost transit pass. So for us, it's a very important component of community college education, not just our tuition, that's still reasonably low, but also the cost of transportation, the cost of books. So this is something that we're all working on and we're supportive of. I should say that there was a question from one of our trustees about the background of the bill, the sponsorship and issues like that, and that's a, that was a shortcoming of our recommendation. What we didn't do and we should have done is include a link to the Legislative Council's Digest, so you could be fully informed about the bill. So that's something we'll pay attention to as we move forward with the committee.
Trustee Brown?
So basically, from understanding, is this the bill that was brought through by Holden?
Yes, Chris Holden.
Okay. So yeah, I know there was a lot of lobbying and work that went through to try to get this bill through for our students, so I am definitely in support of it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Trustee Osterling?
I support this, and just want to point out that here in California, the way that our community college system works, the price of tuition compared to other states is relatively low, so sometimes the barrier and difficulty to community college education is things like books and transit. And anecdotally, when I've been on campus here and talked to students, some of them are taking transit for one to two hours to get here to PCC, and I admire their determination to get an education. And we need to, we can't change the length of time it takes them to get here, but at least we can support and subsidize the cost to do that.
Any other questions from trustees? I have one question. What does the bill say with respect to the course load or the full-time, part-time break and the funds that would be dedicated?
I can't answer that.
Dean Rebecca Cobb will be able to give us the answer.
And I acknowledge this might be pretty complicated because this is statewide, there are transit agencies here and there and all over the place, but I'd just like a little clarification on that because that's a bit of interest to our students.
Right, so the bill itself doesn't mention a course load. The, just last week, if you're not aware, the MTA Board passed a pilot project that's connected to this in which they've reduced their requirement, course load requirement to eight units for student eligibility for their current college student pass. So eight units is what's related or what is expressed right now. In the bill itself, there is no unit requirement. There is a new low-income requirement, but I believe most community colleges meet that. Certainly we do because it's based on percentage of students on bog or other fee waivers.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Do I hear a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Item M, Adopt Resolution Number 556 in commemoration of the 101st anniversary of the Armenian genocide, April 2016. President Verdiyan?
Mr. President, we have two speakers, and the first is Agüepe Baltiginian.
Dear Board of Trustees and Superintendent, my name is Agub Altayen, and I'm the president of the Armenian Student Association here in school. I would like to say a few words about how much this resolution is important to the cl-. club. So our club consists of 160 registered students and way more alumni than we had that were regularly attending in different events and fundraisers. We've done many things this year, including cultural, educational, entertaining events. Culture as if like the Armenian genocide, for example, event that we had here in the forum. Educational such as the cooperation that we have with the Educational Committee, the Human Relations Committee from the Pasadena District here. And entertaining, for example, like the Olese Games that we were going to Santa Barbara every year annually and were having great games with other schools such as USC, UCLA, and keep going. So this is a very big deal for our club because we don't consist only for Armenians. Our goal is to actually bring together Armenians and non-Armenians and also teach to the PCC people that are our cause, our tradition, our culture, and show how much we've been heard from this genocide. So I would like to welcome you as well to our next events that we're going to have next semester to learn more for you as well. Like, believe me, you will enjoy it, all of the events and the fundraisers. I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Felicia Kadamian.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and President Superintendent. My name is Felicia Kadamian, and I am part of the Armenian National Committee Pasadena Chapter. I first want to start off by saying thank you so much for passing our resolutions in the past. It has been a tremendous support to see that the Board of Trustees and PCC has been so supportive to the Armenian community and making sure that our history and our culture has been recognized, not only by PCC but also by our students and supporting our students, including the Armenian Student Association. As we heard from Hagop, he has been very active as the past president here in making sure that the Armenian Student Association does have a presence here on campus at PCC as well as within the greater community of Pasadena. In fact, he's actually partnered with the City of Pasadena Human Relations Commission and has actually held several forums here at PCC. These events, including the resolution, show how important it is for the Armenian community and the Armenian students to have a voice, to be able to be heard. And again, I want to thank you again for having them passed in the past, and I do encourage you to pass it again this time around. We're also looking forward to our continued partnership with the Armenian National Committee of America and PCC and the Board of Trustees. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's all we have.
Thank you. Dr. Verdiyan?
The College recommends that the Board of Trustees passes this resolution in support of not only the Armenian students at Pasadena City College but also in recognition for the 1.5 million men and women and children of Armenian descent that lost their lives. And the Board of... We also recommend that the Board calls upon the President of the United States to work toward equitable, constructive, stable, and durable Armenian-Turkish relations based upon the Republic of Turkey's full acknowledgement of the facts and ongoing consequences of the Armenian genocide. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion?
First of all, I wanted to just commend the Armenian community in general for constantly reminding us if we forget about the events of history, we're doomed to repeat them. And then secondly, a request to Hagop, the student representative, if you could give us email notification to the trustees of your upcoming events, and we look forward to attending. Thank you.
I'd also like to just say congratulations to you on this resolution. I also think it's a very grim reminder to all of us of events that are occurring even now around the world and that we always have to be mindful of our fellow human beings and their rights and their lives and their liberties.
Any other comments?
Okay. Last year, at the 100th anniversary, I did a certain amount of reading up. And I mentioned last year when the resolution came before the board that one of the starkest way that somebody can get an appreciation of what went on in the Eastern Ottoman Empire in 1915 is to read the diplomatic dispatches of Ambassador Morgenthau. Ambassador Morgenthau was the ambassador to the Ottoman Empire from the United States, and he sent to the State Department and diplomatic dispatches very specific descriptions of what took place there. And as Mr. Hillsman pointed out, that there's a lot of strife going on there now. But I know one location that was mentioned by Ambassador Morgenthau that has been in the news in the last several years as the civil war in Syria is tearing that country apart was the city of Aleppo, which was a very prominent city and trading center in that area. And you read about it in Mr. Morgenthau's dispatches, and it's in the news today. Any other comments? Do I hear a motion?
I would move approval.
We already went through that.
No, we did?
We did, yeah.
And to vote?
Vote. All in favor? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Information items. Superintendent, President's Report.
Board President, Trustees, Selvage, members of the Board, and members of the public, I want to start by thanking the Board for approving in the consent item a whole number of administrators and faculty and staff in the consent item P. And I know that we're looking forward to the three new Vice Presidents approved today to join us. Dr. Lisa Norman as Vice President for Human Resources, Dr. Terry Juney, Vice President for Instruction, and Dr. Richard Storey as Vice President of Business and Administrative Services. And also, we have in the same list, we also have four new Deans that have been approved by the Board. Two of them are not with us today. They are Dr. Natalie Russell for ESL and Foreign Languages and Ms. Dionne Miller for Kinesiology and Athletics. They'll be starting on June 20th and July 1st respectively. But we have with us today in the audience, Dr. Rocky Sifoni, our new Dean for the Business Division. Dr. Sifoni, if you could just please stand and be recognized. We also have Ms. Carrie Starbird, Dean of Mathematics. Carrie, right? And we also, in that same list, we also had our new director, or permanent director, I should say, of transfer and outreach, Mr. Meek Alexander. And the new faculty in the room, I know we have Ms. Kimber Leshedyak is in the Business Division, right? That's you, right, Ms. Kimber Leshedyak? And we also have our new permanent counselor who left us as an interim administrator in some other area to now become a permanent counselor, Mr. Bablo. And I hope I did not miss anybody else who just got a new assignment. If there is anyone in the general public, please raise your hand or stand so that we may recognize you.
Yes.
Oh, that's true, yes. Mr. Matthew Kiaman is our new interim Executive Director of Information Technology. I do apologize to you, Mr. Kiaman. I mean, I keep seeing you sitting there, and I forgot that you just got this new position. All right. I also want to take a moment to thank all the faculty members who have served on all the committees and our staff and our administrators and especially our Deans who have sat on so many hiring committees. And I am proud to say that the way the hiring happened this semester, Pasadena City College should probably be a role model for the state that has been wanting for a long time and that has been pushing colleges to work towards diversifying their faculty. And I think that as of now, of the... We have probably 67% to 70% of our new hires come from groups that have so far been underrepresented in higher education, administration, and teaching. And again, I want to thank HR and recognize the work of Ms. Julie Mosier and her team in HR who have worked diligently to ensure that our faculty and staff and administration get the appropriate training when it comes to cultural sensitivity. I would also like to congratulate our Associated Students and our Dean of Student Life, Dean Rebecca Cobb, as well as everyone else who worked to have the Metro's new U-Pass program receive approval at last Thursday's Metro Board meeting. As you know, we have partnered with Metro for many years in finding ways to reduce transportation costs for our students. And again, today, we saw our Board pass a resolution in support of that. Tomorrow, and as I mentioned before, Trustee Osterling, Dr. Foster, myself, Dr. Cynthia Olivo, and Mr. Alexander Buckelheid, our Executive Director for Strategic Planning and Communications, will be going to Sacramento where we will be recognized for being one of the leading transfer institutions in the state. Next Thursday, we will have an opportunity at lunchtime to share with business and city leaders the various projects that Pasadena City College is working on as part of the Centennial Facilities Master Plan. We believe that it will be an opportunity for us to inform the community as to the vision that Pasadena City College and Pasadena Area Community College District has for the future of education in this area of California. We do believe that what we do at this college with the number of students we bring here, we significantly help the economic and workforce development of the region. And finally, I would like to congratulate our Restorative Dental Technology Program, which was recently named as the recipient of the Stern Gold Award from the Foundation for Dental Laboratory Technology. This award will provide equipment and supplies to students in our programs, and it is a testament to the quality of our faculty, staff, and students. And also, the same program had a 100 pass rate at the Board Exam, which is a feat that not too many colleges can boast of. And this concludes my report.
Thank you. Item O, Announcements by Shared Governance Representatives and Board of Trustees. Academic Senate?
I have nothing to announce. Thank you.
Management Association?
We are pleased to announce that we will be sponsoring a Classified Appreciation Day on June 23rd from 2:00 to 4:00 o'clock. That split time is to accommodate the two, you know, morning and evening shifts for the classified staff.
Thank you. Classified Senate?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. We seem to have a new face representing the Associated Students. Yes, Julia?
Yes. Good afternoon to the Board of Trustees and President Dr. Verdiyan. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Julia Russo. And as of today, I am the newly elected President of Associated Students. So I truly look forward to working with each and every one of you this upcoming year. So all of you know, our entire Board has switched out, so our past Board will now be replaced by newly elected officials. In addition, I'd like to give just a short message on Irving's behalf. He would like to say I want to thank everyone for a great year full of support for our students and opportunities. I am honored to have had the opportunity to sit and represent our Lancers. I know Julia Russo will do a fantastic job, and let's work together with our students to make sure they achieve their goals here at Pasadena City College. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I met Julia about a month ago, was it, at an event over at the USC Pacific Asia Museum that our local Assemblyman, Chris Holden, had sponsored and got a chance to get to know Julia. And I believe that was right before or that was right after the election, correct?
Yes, sir.
Correct, yes. Well, congratulations and thank you for taking on the workload that you're going to assume this coming year.
Thank you.
Item P, Proposed Future Board Business... Oh.
We may have announcements by the Board.
Yes. Any comments by Board members? Trustee Osterling?
My comments are brief. Our hearts and our prayers go out to our fellow college campus at UCLA and to other colleges that have experienced violence.
Thank you. Trustee Martin?
I want to send a personal compliment and congratulations to Dr. Verdiyan but all the campus for these new hires. We got a stack, and we were just reading the finalists. So I know, you know, from what we read, there were 75 applicants for each one. We were just reading one. So what would 75 times this be? That'd be pretty high. So a lot of people did a lot of hard work through to get that many applicants through the process and properly screened. From our impression here on the Board, there was good cooperation between all the parts of the college, which has been a theme the last few years of both, I think, the staff, the Board, and in particular, Dr. Verdiyan. I'm thrilled that he's had an opportunity to kind of, in some ways, choose his team for the managers that you have described, and I'm very excited for him and for us because I know that in my lessons in management, kind of in the old Japanese model, the ability to be able to work collaboratively is of higher value than even competency. And so it appears from my reading that we got the best of both, and so I'm very excited about all of those. So I wanted to commend all you and your groups and those of you, in particular, Dr. Verdiyan, because you've been kind of running a little bit with one hand behind your back, but you managed to get it all done and get it all through thanks to the help of everybody here. So personal compliments and thank yous from the Board.
Dr. Fellow?
First of all, I just want to say thank you to Kelly for being such a great student trustee. I enjoyed her immensely. I also want to say, three weeks ago, I had to have some very minor surgery on this finger at the Arcadia outpatient. And for this little finger, I had three nurses, and they are all graduates of PCC. And we just had a... You know, surgery shouldn't be fun, but we had a lot of fun. We talked all the way through. And I just want to say, they have such a great love of this institution, and they're professors of nursing, which I've always had high respect for in the whole program. So I just want to give a shout-out, and you're just outstanding. Thank you.
Trustee Hillsman?
Sir, I just wanted to reiterate the President Superintendent's announcement about the meeting on Tuesday with regard to the Centennial Master Plan and the very exciting prospects that we have for the future of the college over, hopefully, the next generation. I would urge everybody to attend to learn about what the future may hold for us and encourage your support for this process going forward.
Trustee Brown?
Yeah. So I'm pretty much in the same situation as Dr. Fellow. So I've been having some dental work, seriously.
We're falling apart.
And right here in Pasadena, which was really great. So I'm sitting in this office, and this nice-looking young man, Latino, nice, buff young man, came to start working on me and says, "So where did you go to school?" "PCC." I said, "You're kidding me." So I was just thrilled. He says, "As a matter of fact, there's another young man over there." So when Dr. Matsumuro came in, I had to tell him how grateful we were that he's using our students from PCC. And I was just beside myself. So yeah, kudos to the dental program.
Thank you. Trustee Grippian, do you have any inaugural comments that you would like to make?
I would just like to thank everyone for having me. I'm really looking forward to being your next student trustee, and I'm looking forward to getting to know each and one of you individually. Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome. President Wa is traveling. That's why I am presiding at this meeting. I don't have any other comments except I'd like to reiterate the message that trustee Martin made about our ability to hire a really first-class slate of new instructors here at PCC, and we're not finished yet. Item P, proposed future board business meeting dates. We have Wednesday, June 15th, Wednesday, July 20th, and Wednesday, August 17th. Are there any comments or observations from anybody on the board or Dr. Verdiyan? No. Any proposed future agenda items? Hearing none? This meeting is adjourned.